Good evening. It is Monday, June 4th, 2012. I will call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting. And posted over here in the northwest corner of this room is the actual Open Meeting Act, made accessible to any of you that want to do a little reading tonight. So, I will ask that you join with us in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Fauss.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Okay. Under action, I would request approval of the consent agenda, removing item 13 and placing that on the regular agenda.
Second.
I have a motion with a second with the change of item 13. If you will, please vote. I forgot to turn that on down there. All council members voting in the affirmative. All right. And then approval of the full agenda that's before us tonight with the addition of item 13 in that full agenda. And we will be removing item 30 from this agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second with the noted changes. Again, if you will, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Okay. Under special presentations tonight, we'll start right off with a 25th Street reconstruction update. Dennis?
Well, we're continuing to make work, progress on 25th Street. Maybe a little behind with some rain this week. Didn't get as much done as we had hoped for, but they are making progress. I think they've got paving up to Norfolk Avenue. We're getting very close to that. Most of the utilities are in on Norfolk Avenue, so they should be getting ready to build subway down there and do that. Continuing to work on the north approach, north abutment to the bridge and continue to make progress. So, answering any questions you might have.
Dennis, the, in their overall general schedule that they had put out earlier, it looks like they're ahead of schedule on that?
Yeah. We're moving, we're making better progress than we probably had anticipated. We've kind of combined some phases and we're doing some work up south of the park entrance and down along Maple and heading toward Hardeston that was a separate phase that we've kind of combined into that phase with the bridge. So, that will help move along the overall schedule. And also, the Norfolk Avenue schedule kind of got pulled ahead, recognizing that there was a lot of utilities that had to be done there. So, I'm hoping that sometime before, maybe the first of August, that all we're dealing with is buttoning up the bridge and the stuff to the north and then that area between Hardeston and Norfolk Avenue. And if we can make that, it will be a chance of getting most of it done this fall.
Okay. And I guess that was the second question. With it being somewhat ahead, any idea or estimate from the contractor as far as when Norfolk Avenue will open back up? Six weeks? Eight weeks?
Probably, I would hope more closer to that six-week timeframe than the eight-week timeframe. It's appearing that we will probably have an intersection open with a four-way stop. The traffic signals will be the, you know, we've got a long lead time in some of that. So, we're talking about what the best mechanism for dealing with that and trying to look at mechanisms that we could do short of keeping it closed until we had the traffic signal there. And, you know, one of the ones was, well, we're just letting Norfolk Avenue go. And I says, that's probably not going to work very well when people drive by and see South 25th Street basically all complete sitting there. And other things, if we tried to do other things, we would just end up pushing a lot of traffic onto Madison or West Side between 25th and 27th Streets. So, I'm leaning toward the four-way stop. Hopefully, you've got to have two people that aren't paying attention before you've got problems.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dennis on this issue? If not, then Dennis, move right on into the recreation update.
All right. Well, we're making great progress down there. The pool vessels are complete. The recirculation pumps are operational. Slide pumps are operational. The slides are about 95 percent complete. We're right now working on trying to get water balance in the two vessels. heaters are working. Water's toasty, 78, 79, 80 degrees, right in there. So, got that operational. Pushing, trying to get the multipurpose building finished up. Just lots of things to do in there. Landscaper and the underground sprinkler contractors and the painting contractor worked all weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and the general contractor did as well. So, moving forward, we have an inspection by the Department of Health on Wednesday, June 6th. And pending good outcome from that, I'm going to go out on a limb that we're hoping should have some invitation-only training sessions on June 12th and June 13th and opening to the public on June 15th. 14th gives us a day to figure out all the hiccups we learned from the 12th and the 13th. So...
Is that going to be sotted down there, Dennis? Is that the way we're doing it? Or is it some of it...
They're siding the stuff that is inside of the pool perimeter fence. The areas that are outside of that around the pool will be seeded. So...
Okay.
Contractors down there sealing the joints in the north half of the parking lot. Getting ready to stripe that yet this week. Landscaper is supposed to be coming for that part of it to plant trees, shrubs, all those things. Contractor and Pat Mersny were out this afternoon going over every tree location and saying yea or nay. So, that happened. So, hopefully by Friday night, that parking lot's cleaned up and striped and ready for action. And the multipurpose building will be probably working in their most, potential that they're going to have a lot of work in there yet this weekend for us to be ready on the 12th. So, it's coming along.
Okay.
I got a question for you on the ball, the baseball fields where the fence was tore out. What's proposed to happen back there?
There's an eight-foot wide sidewalk, wide sidewalk that's going down from basically, what's it, streets out to Pazwalk. I'm drawing a blank.
Logan.
Well, the street you live on.
Bluff.
Bluff. So, we're going from Bluff to Pazwalk along Logan and then from Pazwalk east to the alley. And basically, that sidewalk's going to be basically on the inside, what was the inside of that old fence? That area will just be left open. The only, we're using the outfield fence for site control. So, if you just come off the ends of the outfield fence and take, carry that over into the rest of the fencing to provide site control, area will be just left grass and open and improve sidewalks in that area. Once we get to the aquatics facility, the sidewalk will move out and be back, you know, four to five feet from the sidewalk. We just ran out of room in that area with the mechanical building and the birmingham and some of those things.
Okay. Any other questions at all?
Entrance beautification and stuff, that'll be coming along. It may be a while down the road before we get that all buttoned up, but...
Okay. So, that's, all right.
I had one question. Someone called in there. Was some confusion in the paper. They said that the grand opening will be June 30th for the whole park.
Grand opening for the entire park will be June 30th.
Okay.
That's ribbon cutting.
Right. But I just wanted to bring that up because there was some confusion with the pool opening on the 15th and the grand opening on the 30th. So, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
The veterans are going to be there and putting up the flags for all the service folks and the American flag and...
That all begins at 9:00 a.m., does it not, on that day?
I think it does. And there'll be that brief ceremony and then there'll be tours of all of the facilities, football, baseball, aquatics facility, and then noon or 1 o'clock.
The water facility opens at noon on that day.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So, you're all invited. All right. Any other...
You ought to enjoy it before then.
Any other questions or comments or...
All right. Then we'll move into our public hearings. Let's start right off with the public hearing to amend section 1-11, 27-6, 27-244, 27-262, and 27-273 of the code to clarify that various maps required to be approved by the city are to be approved by ordinance. I will open this public hearing to include Public Hearing 19, approving the official flood insurance rate map, as well, the official airport zoning map of the city, and also the official wellhead protection overlay district map. So, with that, this public hearing is open. And Trent, do you want to give explanation on all this?
I'll do my best, Mayor, Council. On all those that you mentioned, I'm not going to repeat them for you. Basically, on 15, or ordinance number 5207, to be approved by ordinance was added in on all of those. Prior to that, we had these maps and they just were never approved by ordinance. It was somewhere by resolution. And like the airport one, I believe, I can't find record. That was before my time when that was, whether it was amended or resolution or what the case was on that. On ordinance number 5208, approving the official flood insurance rate map, this is the same map that we've been using all along, 2005 map. And that was the last map that was approved by FEMA. So, we just approved it by ordinance. The 5209 airport zoning map, this is a new map for us. The map that we had been using, I believe, was possibly a resolution or maybe nothing. I don't know if Clint, you can verify that or not. I don't think we...
I don't think anyone was ever able to tell us.
Yeah. I couldn't find nothing.
Part of the reason why we wanted to make it more trackable.
So, we do have a 2008 map that was done by JEO. And that was, I've been utilizing it. Actually, I just used it today. And that map, it went from a one-page map back in 1976. It was the last map that I could find that we've been using for all of our tower structures and anything on approaches, departures for Norfolk Regional. And the new map is 23 pages. So, it grew in size and you can see that in the packet there. Yeah, a lot more detail, which gives us a lot more information on locating towers, garages, whatever the case may be. So, that's a big help. Ordinance number 5210 is official wellhead protection overlay map, which was started before I got into this. And Dennis is in the background there. And this map, there was amendment to it with Dinkles. And DQ did a revision on it. So, we had a map in place prior to this and now there's a revision. It was added to the east, just a little bit more land to the east. So, in behind Dinkles and as on that map there, it just kind of cuts in behind Dinkles and comes down. That was the only thing that was added. Everything else was the same, I believe. That's correct.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to come forward and speak to this? Any of the items as Trent explained here? Dennis, you're comfortable with what was explained?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. If not, then I'll close this public hearing. And we'll act on each one of these accordingly. So, I would ask for consideration of ordinance number 5207.
Your Honor, I would propose consideration of ordinance 5207 on first reading.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion with a second. Beth, you want to read a short title for us on this?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held public hearings on May 22nd, 2012 to consider these amendments and approved, they were approved by a nine-to-zero vote by the planning commission.
So, what we just read there will cover all these ordinances. Okay? So, with that, if you will, please vote.
I need the short title.
Oh, do you have a, okay. Short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend sections 1-11, 27-6, 27-244, 27-262, and 27-273 of the official city code to clarify that various maps required to be approved by the city are to be approved by ordinance, to provide when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. And now, if you will, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5207 carries on first reading.
Now, due to the fact that this is simply a housekeeping ordinance item, move that we suspend the rules and pass 5207 on second and third.
Second.
Okay. You heard the motion with a second to suspend and pass on second and third. If no further discussion, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5207 carries on second and third.
Next, I would ask for consideration of ordinance number 5208, approving the official flood insurance rate map.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
A motion with a second for approval of ordinance number 5208. And again, the short title that was given was, will take care of us, won't it? No, I have to do the short. You do on each one. Okay. Okay.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to approve the official flood insurance rate map of the city and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. All right. And in that, if you'll please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. 52, ordinance 5208 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5208 on second and third.
Second.
You heard the motion with a second. If no further discussion, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5208 carries on second and third.
Next would be consideration of ordinance 5209, approving the official airport zoning map.
Your Honor, I move consideration of ordinance 5209 on first reading. Second.
Motion with a second for approval of ordinance number 5209. Short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to approve the official airport zoning map of the city and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Again, if you will, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5209 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and introduce ordinance number 5209 on second and third for consideration. I'd second that.
Okay. We have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third reading. If no further discussion, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5209 carries on second and third.
And finally, would be consideration of ordinance number 5210, approving the official wellhead protection overlay district map.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce ordinance 5210 on first reading.
Second that, Your Honor.
We have a motion before us for consideration of approval of 5210 on first reading. Short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to approve the official wellhead protection overlay district map of the city and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5210 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion, we suspend the rules, pass ordinance 5210 on second and third.
Second that, Your Honor.
Looks like we have some need for discussion on this.
Mayor, when I talked to the six property owners, we said it'd be passed on three separate readings. So, I would like to stay with that if we could, please.
You bet.
I'll withdraw if I can.
All right. Certainly.
The second also withdraws.
All right. So, with that, it was passed on first reading and it will be before us at the next meeting once again. So, thank you, Dennis. Appreciate that. All right. Moving right along then, let's turn to public hearing to consider submission of an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant in the amount of $175,000 for comprehensive revitalization activities. I will open this public hearing. Mr. Higginbotham, I'll look to you.
Hello. I'm Higginbotham, the director of the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. Name down here because I'm too old to do more than one thing at once. Okay. This is, obviously, this program goes back to 2005. This is phase three of round two, or I prefer to call it rounds, phase six. But anyway, this, I think your board packet, there was a little mix-up. What's in your board packet is wrong compared to what the staff in our office had put together. And I believe the public hearing notice was publicized correctly, but the, and I'll tell you what the changes are. So, if you look at, to get through that first, the grant amount is still the same. It's a $175,000 grant. Instead of $117,200 for streets and infrastructure, sidewalks and those kind of things, it's going to be $131,000 even, which is an increase of $13,800. The decrease is from the commercial facade improvements. The commercial rehab will go from $43,800 to $30,000. And the general administration stays the same. There was a little error on the total project cost. The total project cost is $336,000 instead of $333,000. So, we'll get that out of the way. Real quick, we need to make sure that the resolution reflects those changes and the, and I apologize for the miscommunications on that. So, basically, we're applying for $117,000, $175,000, $131,000 for street sidewalks and other infrastructure improvements in the targeted area, $30,000 for the commercial facade improvements. I think this will be the third phase of the commercial facade improvements. We've already spent $60,000 down there. This grant requires a one-for-one match, so between the facade improvement businesses, matching their project individually, the city is picking up the slack overall to get to the one-for-one on the entire three phases with water and sewer and street projects. So, we're just here to have the required public hearing to officially apply for this third round of funding for the community revitalization program.
Okay. Any questions for Tom? All right. With that being said, do I assume that we make the corrections here to this? Is that what you're advising me?
Yes. Yeah. And I think, well, however Beth wants to handle it, I think Beth, I kind of gave the corrections.
Okay.
And then she'll just rewrite that resolution to the effect of the 117 to the 131.
Since he has stated, we're free to go forward. Okay. All right. Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to come forward and speak to this or may have questions regarding this? Okay. Nothing else from the council then? I will close this public hearing and ask for consideration of resolution number 2012-18, approving the application as presented to us by Mr. Higginbotham.
I have a question. Do we have to, do we have to, do we have to introduce this in amended form? Or will we just, it'll be rewritten?
You can. Okay. All right.
I will introduce resolution 2012-18 as amended.
Second.
Okay. You heard the motion to approve resolution number 2012-18 with the amendment as stated by Mr. Higginbotham. Any further discussion at all? If not, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2012-18 as amended is adopted. Okay. So, next is a public hearing to seek comments regarding acquisition of property at 1,001 Northdale Drive. I will open this public hearing and I believe Mr. Shukai is going to give us a little rundown.
What this is, Your Honor, is this is a requirement of the Nebraska statutes that says whenever the city acquires property, before doing so, you must first have a public hearing. So, that is the, this is the public hearing that's required by the statute. If I might also talk about the next item, which is the resolution. This property that's addressed here with the hearing is a property that had a fire in it. It's been condemned. It's one of these properties that has had a, one of those mortgage problems that we've heard so much about in the last couple of years and that the mortgage was made locally. It was sold and sold and sold and sold and transferred and sold. And it's ended up to a company from, that apparently is addressed at Florida, Equacredit Corporation of America and Select Portfolio Servicing, which is in Utah, seems to be where the, where the thing stopped. What the intent is to do here is we have an agreement that would be approved if you were to approve the resolution. The agreement provides that there's two years of taxes of about $3,000 a year plus delinquent interest that is due and accruing on this. And when, if this is approved, the Select Portfolio Security is going to be paying off those taxes so that all of the back real estate taxes are paid off on it. They're going to provide the city with a quitclaim deed to that property. When the city acquires the property, the city can then demo the property. The, there will then be, so that you're aware of what's entitled or what goes along with this, the property before the city can sell the property, there'll need to be a quiet title action because of all of the problems, if you will, or questions about what went on with the, with the various properties and the transfers and the assignments. There also are some, both federal tax liens on the property, there are state tax liens on the property, I think according to what's on record, and the amount of about $50,000. We've talked to both the feds and the state revenue people. We think that we can, once, once they know that the prior owners are not going to benefit from that, there's a mechanism by which we can get rid of that. And at the end of the time, have a, have a, have a piece of property with, that will be removed and then it can be sold in an effort to recover those demo costs. By doing it this way, instead of, instead of a special assessment, if you would have knocked it down and done the special assessment business, you would have bought the taxes. You would have probably had to wait the process for demo, for, foreclosing on the special assessment would have required holding that property for probably at least three years. By doing it this way, it's only a matter of how quickly we could do the specialist, or the matter of months probably after the demo's done, during which we have to do all the things with the, with the quiet title. So, if you have any questions about that, I'll try to answer them. I could tell you lots of things about this property, but I'll be quiet.
I think that's appreciated, Clint. I think the only thing that I would say we're probably all most concerned with is to make sure we're not taking on any more liability by the city having this piece of property. And if I hear you right, with a quick title, that, any responsibility to that $50,000, I think that you've...
No, we'll get, we'll, we'll work our way around that.
All right.
And we've done that before. But, you know, if there's somebody else that would rather have it, that would be fine.
Not I.
Well, and as bad as it is up there, I think we need to wheel it to the neighbors to clean that up as quickly as we can. Waiting three or four years probably isn't acceptable.
I'd agree with that, certainly. So, while it's a little unusual, I do think this is probably the best way to handle it. So...
Just in clarification, just in common terms and not lawyer terms, we're basically going to get this thing tore down. So, get rid of the ISO and then we'll have a couple-month waiting period to quiet the claim or quiet the title.
Quiet title action will probably take a minimum of four or five months.
Okay.
And then we should be in a... And then we should be in a position where, where the property can be sold.
Thanks.
We can still demo prior to that? Is that what you said?
Yeah, what, with the, with the arrangement that we have here, what should happen is that, they didn't want to sign this agreement until after it was approved by the council. What we will do then is, is, once this is done, we'll get the agreement signed. Hopefully they'll, then we'll move on to getting the, the property conveyed to the city and the taxes paid. And as soon as that happens, I know that there, Trent could address this, there's been some, you've talked to some various folks about demo, and at one point in time had some bids. I don't know how good those bids are at this point in time, but then can move as expeditiously as possible to do that. I don't know if, if, there may have been some asbestos testing may have occurred. I don't know if there's some asbestos abatement that needs to also occur. So the testing has occurred, but the abatement is not, if I'm.
That's correct. Testing, and there was several things that, that will have to be abated in that property. I'm not sure these were old figures, something that we're trying to do one step at a time ahead of all this, just so we could speed up the process. So if this happened here, that we wouldn't be waiting for that. But it probably going to be in an $1,800 area for the abatement. And the old figures on, for the demolition was around $5,500 just for the demo. And then there's some fill, and of course, all that stuff changes, so them aren't probably real true hard numbers, because it's been a while, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Nonetheless, we view it as progress.
This is an open, a public hearing, so is there anyone that does want to come forward and speak to this? Or may have questions about it? Feel free to come forward and, if you will, state your name and sign in.
Robert Baker. I live at 1220 Sunny Dell. The house in question is on Lot 20 of the Sunny Dell addition. My house is on Lot 18. The owner of Lot 19 is in attendance, and the people whose property abuts just to the north, the Hopkins, are in attendance. So we have quite a few here that have an interest in the property. I'm not authorized to speak for anyone except myself, but the house burned June 30th of last year. The, obviously, the owner has no interest in doing what he should be doing. So my feeling, and I'm sure the rest of the people will agree with me, is that we hope the city will take control and clean up that mess. If you've not driven by it, do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Sir, I meant, before you walk out, sir, would you sign in for us, too? Please. No, that's fine, that's fine.
I'm Linda Ween, and I'm, I adjoin the property that was burned. And in addition to removing the house, I would also request you remove the trees that are hanging over my house. The one in the backyard is actually mentioned in the paperwork that's hanging in front of the house, and it's dead and needs to be removed. That's my only request.
Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak to this or may have questions? Okay, hearing none then? I will close this public hearing and ask for consideration of resolution 2012-19, approving the acquisition of the property at 1001 Northdale Drive.
Your Honor, I would introduce resolution 2012-19.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve resolution number 2012-19. Any further discussion at all? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2012-19 is adopted.
Okay. Again, all of you, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your patience on this. Some things are out of control, but like I say, we've got it taken care of now, and appreciate Trent, your efforts in this as well. So we're going to move right along then to consideration of resolution number 2012-20, approving the preliminary plan amendment to the amended Warren Plan Development. I believe there may be someone that wants to come forward and speak to this.
My name is Karen Larson. I'm with JEO Consulting Group. I'm representing the Warren Garage Door Company. It's a family-owned business. It's on 37th Street. I believe you all have a plan of what they would like to do, and that would be to put up some RV storage buildings, or one building that could potentially be expanded just to the west of their property, or on their property, I guess, to the west of their existing building. I believe Andrea might have a diagram of what the potential building could look like that you could look at. I think this would be a big improvement to the area, and I think with as many RV storage units, or as many RVs as they are in Norfolk on driveways, people would like to have this. And I don't know that there's enough storage for those, so I think this will be a good thing.
Are there any questions? Any questions at all for Karen? Hearing none? Okay. Trent, do you have anything you want to add to this at all, or give us any update on that?
The first phase, this is, are we still, it's still going to be in phases, Karen?
Yeah.
Approximately 15 units initially, be indoor storage, be taller garage doors, obviously, to get those indoors. There's quite a few storage units in town, but not a lot of indoor storage for RVs, so obviously with our hail we've had this year, I think more and more people are wanting to put them things inside, so, and I don't blame them.
Yeah.
But then there's a couple phases to that, and a possibility to add approximately 28 more in additional phases, so. And I think they're working on, JEO is working on this drainage plan for the area.
Correct.
Yep, and it's just preliminary until we get the rest of them in, so we're working closely with them.
So that's what we're looking at, is just the preliminary plan?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Karen.
Trent, this goes back to the planning commission before it comes back to us, then?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, please vote. We don't, I'm sorry, we didn't even introduce this, I'm sorry. I'm asking for a consideration of resolution 2012.
I'd move for consideration of resolution 2012.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to approve resolution 2012, approving the preliminary plan amendment to the amended plan development. With no further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2012-20 is adopted.
Okay, let's see, we pulled item 30, so let's go back to the item 13 on the consent agenda that was moved to the regular, which is consideration of an agreement with the Rotary Club to hold three music performance events in Skyview Park, allowing alcohol consumption in the park during those events. I would need a motion for consideration of.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
I'd second that.
All right. Discussion, Clint, you want to update us?
The reason that that's come off the consent agenda is this afternoon, there he is, Stan Christensen called me, and so about, he wanted to, he requested three things changed in the agreement, so what those three things are would be in paragraph two of the agreement that was included in your package, the date, the first date should be June 21st instead of the 22nd. He would like that changed. The second thing was that, in regard to the alcohol, the agreement talked about from 6:30 to 9:00 PM. Stan wanted that to be 6:00 until 9:00 PM. And then if you remember the last meeting when Josh Wolf was here and addressed the issue, he talked about the area that they were going to conduct this in was going to be fenced, so we had written that in the agreement that way. Stan said that they didn't want to be required to fence it, so I proposed a, some language that would give them the option to either, give the Rotary either the option to, to fence it, or to place a non-permanent chalk line or similar marking in the area depicted on Exhibit A. So those were the three changes that we had talked about. If those were agreeable to the, to the council, what, what we would ask you to do would be to make an amendment to the agreement that's on the, that's before you to change the date, time, and fencing requirements as we've outlined, and then upon approving those amendments, then vote on the agreement as amended. So take two votes to approve it, if that's what your inclination is to do tonight.
So there would not be a physical fence, it would be an outline of one, or there'd be a designated area there of one type or another?
We had a meeting at the Chamber office about two months ago, and Pat Marisney or Shane, one of them suggested we just use, I guess like you, with a football field or something, instead of actually putting fences up. So that's what I was thinking of. Unfortunately, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and.
But it would be, it would be defined?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Clint, will the liquor commission go along with that? I know they have special rules about handing beer and stuff over the fence and.
Great question. The liquor commission doesn't have anything to do with this because there is no sale of alcohol.
Okay.
If this was the sale of alcohol, you're talking about a.
Right.
A beer tent or something where you've got to have the fence.
Okay.
And so that's not required because there's no sale of alcohol.
Okay, thank you.
Great clarification.
Is there a parameter on how much security will be there?
It's stated in there, but I don't.
Yeah, we've addressed it very well in the agreement where it says that the Rotary shall at its expense provide adequate security for crowd control at its event. I, you know, who knows what the, what the turnout of that's going to be, and so they're going to provide security for their, for their own event. I think that the agreement is pretty clear that, that we've done as best we can for this to restrict the alcohol to the area that's denoted on the, on the picture, which is basically from, on the north side of the lake, from the south of the shelter, the large shelter, on to the, on to the, to the, to the water itself. And we've tried to do what we can to say that that's the only area where the, where the alcohol would be involved. You know, if you're going to be pristine about it, and I see Chief Meisner's there, I'll ask him to listen, but my understanding is to be pristine about it, what would happen would be that the, the alcohol would come in a, in a, in a bottle that hadn't been opened, and it would be consumed, or, or, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't leave the area then in a, in a half control, or a half-opened bottle, and at that point in time, no one would be guilty of, of having an illegal open container. Whether that all occurs or not, I guess I don't, I don't know, but that would, that would allow the mechanism by which you could comply with everything that's in the agreement and all the existing rules, and drive home from the event and not have an open container in your car either. Did I, did I say that accurately, Bill?
Yes.
I would think with any event, I mean, this is a new event to these guys, too. I mean, it's going to be an evolution, and at least they have the option to put the fence in if, if things don't work out, so I don't see any problems with not having a fence.
The other thing that I would just address in the, in that agreement, and this is why we had done it that way, is that this addresses, the agreement addresses the three events, the three timeframes exclusive of the Fourth of July celebration, when there would be no alcohol. We put a provision in there that said if the wheels fall off of this, the elected officials have the right to rescind the agreement after the first, to withdraw your permission for the subsequent ones. That all obviously would, obviously would not preclude, if there's some kind of a hiccup or whatever, wouldn't preclude you from, from amending it, but that's the way that we've tried to address, as Councilman Coys says, the first try at this, and that's what's reflected in the agreement.
Any other discussion or questions?
I had a couple calls on this, and one gentleman in particular really wanted to stress that there's an ordinance in place out at the parks, and that we cannot have alcohol. And his main consideration is that he's very concerned that there's a lot of kids in the park, we're doing something with alcohol, and he wants to make sure that no children are involved, and no children get involved and get in the fence or get out of the fence, and, you know, he's worried about the attitude the kids have, now you're going to let alcohol in the park, why now and why not tomorrow, you know? So we had a long talk about that, but I did have one gentleman very concerned about the alcohol in the park. The ordinance that is in place and the concern of the children, and his concern was if we're not going to honor the ordinance, maybe we should get rid of it. So I'm just relaying his comments, they're not my comments, but I wanted you to know that I did get that call, and that I wanted to bring it up.
Well, my understanding is that this is a kind of a special event-type operation, and that we certainly would, in event we should go ahead and approve this, we certainly have the right to rescind that at any time. And I think that Rotary Club is coming to us in good faith. I think it's an experimental operation, and I see no reason why we shouldn't approve it.
And I will agree with that, but I, I do want to give his concerns, and I, and there are concerns out there, but you're right, if they, if they do a good job and control it and everything goes smooth, I don't see any reason not to do this, but if it doesn't, then we need to take a harder look, so.
I think the key to this, in my estimation at least, the key to this is that it is a defined area. It's not for the whole park, it's just a small portion of the park, and it's a one-time thing, and it's not universal.
If, if I may, Mayor, one of the things, Dave, that you mentioned was the, just get rid of the ordinance. I would just say that there are, there's a whole multitude of things that the council approves to give exceptions, provide exceptions to existing ordinances, whether it's guns in the auditorium, gambling in the auditorium for some of those events, whether it's parking, where you, you close a street or provide parking prohibitions for, for, for certain things. So certainly, the, the, basically saying that, suspending or saying that the ordinance doesn't apply in this particular situation is something that you've done with other things that didn't involve alcohol in the past.
Lots of good discussion, any other? Okay, are we ready to vote?
We need a.
We do have a motion, do we not?
We do, but we need a motion to amend it, then.
Oh, we need a, I'm sorry, we need the motion to amend, my fault.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. Second.
A motion to amend is what's stated with the three changes. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. The motion to amend the agreement carries.
Okay, and with that, then, I would look for.
A motion to approve.
To approve, right, what is, as amended.
Agreement as amended before us, Your Honor. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve as amended. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, all right. Seeing nothing else on the agenda, then? We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight, Stan. Appreciate it.